I will now call the January 18th Blue Springs City Council meeting order. If you would stand with me, observe the long recital, so I'll take you to the bedroom.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. You're welcome in order, so welcome to watching on pay TV. Maybe we have confirmation of the call.
When I state your name, please just state present or that you're here. Councilmember Kayler?
Present.
Levisay?
Here.
Fowler?
Here.
Erickson?
Here.
Edmondson?
Here.
Culpepper?
Present.
Mayor Ross?
Present.
Next, we have the concerned agenda. Councilmember Edmondson asked that we pull item number C. Unless they're allowed to immediately pull, I accept the motion approved, everything except item number C.
Second.
There's a second. Roll call.
Councilmember Kayler?
Aye.
Levisay?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Okay, resolution number 04-2022, Councilmember Erickson.
The reason I asked to pull this was that we spent considerable time in going over the strategic plan, and I just wanted to pull it just to acknowledge the fact that though it seemed like maybe we didn't accomplish a lot maybe in that presentation and going through those meetings and stuff, but if you really go back and look at the strategic plan, we eliminated a lot of stuff that we had done back in 15, got scratched off. We either completed that and moved on, and so in essence, in some ways, we did some stuff over a longer period of time that that meeting pointed out that we were, you know, we're actually completing what we want to do. And what I would like to say is that I would suggest to staff that the council should be more proactive in this and maybe on a quarterly or, you know, bi-yearly basis, we kind of look at this one time, maybe get a report back from staff, or make a presentation during a council meeting, and keep us abreast of this and let us know where we maybe need to follow up and maybe help out, you know, do something to make it better, or at least fulfill some of the goals and stuff that we put in there. So basically, that's what I'd like to suggest to staff is that come back more often, make us accountable as a council, accountable to help be part of that process, because I think we fell off, fell, you know, fell short, far short, I think, of where we should be on trying to keep up with those goals.
Good comments. Councilmember Kayler?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. I would agree with my colleague on the other side, but I would also like to add, I would want to commend the staff, the directors and the fellow council members, on the great job that we all did to this. I agree that the, I'm going to call him agitator, that might not be the right term.
Facilitator.
But I was going to use that word, but anyway, we'll leave it alone. Personally, I, he fell short, way short of my expectations of what we received with a couple sheets of paper compared to spending the time that we did there. But again, thanks to the staff and the directors and my fellow council members for, I thought we did a great job.
Okay, anyone else have any comments on C before I accept the motion for approval? Since you pulled it, you want to make the motion to approve it?
Yes, Your Honor, I will. I'll make a motion, we approve it.
And since you had comments, you want to make the second?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Any further discussion on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in full same sign, motion carries. Next, we have our first public hearing on the retreat at Chapman Farms rezoning and planned unit development concept plan. Staff report.
Mayor, the city has one exhibit.
Oh, not yet.
The city has one exhibit to enter into the record. City Council information form dated January 7th, 2022 with the following attachments: staff memo and revisions received December 29th, 2021, affidavit of publication in the examiner on December 30th, 2021, 185-foot notification map, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site, copy of letter sent to said property owners, staff memo and revisions received November 12th, 2021 through November 22, 2021, staff report with attachments, affidavit with attachments, affidavit of publication in the examiner on September 25, 2021, 185-foot notification map, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site, copy of letter sent to said property owners, title for land use section, Blue Springs code of ordinances by reference, 2014 comprehensive plan by reference, one email received in opposition on October 11th, 2021, bill approving the rezoning and bill approving the planned unit development concept plan. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Thank you. Matt on the behalf of the city?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before you this evening, a request for a rezoning and a PUD concept plan for the retreat at Chapman Farms. It proposed 57-lot single-family subdivision covering 26.29 acres, properties located east of Southwest 7 Highway between southwest Chapman Farms Drive and southwest Mason School Road. The project was denied by the city council on December 6th, 2021, with a reconsideration vote on December 20th, 2021, to allow the applicant to bring back additional revisions to the project to address the city council's concerns. The applicant has resubmitted plans, and staff has provided a summary of those revisions and a memo that was included with the revised plans. Previous versions of this project have also been included for the record. The first item that has been revised in the plan resubmital is the fencing along northwest seven, or Southwest 7 Highway and north and east of Lead Bank. The plan brought before city council on December 20th removed the fence in its entirety. The revised plan this evening includes a six-foot precast concrete wall with a stone veneer, which is shown in the upper right corner of the plan, and will be provided all along the Southwest 7 Highway frontage, as well as north and east of Lead Bank as previously proposed. This design is in keeping with the wall that was approved for Eagles Ridge Estates 5th Plat on December 20th, which also proposed single-family adjacent to Southwest 7 Highway. The applicant is coordinating with Eagles Ridge developer for a comparable wall design. The final design will be reviewed by staff to make sure that height, materials, and location have met this requirement prior to the approval and installation of the fence. And the second item brought for the city, for revision this evening is related to the minimum floor area classification. The plan brought before the city council on December 20th had three classifications ranging in size from 1,800 square feet to 2,200 square feet, with ranches 1,600 square feet to 2,000 square feet. That plan required a modification of the code as it exceeded more than one classification per block and did not match the step-down requirement by block. The revised plan this evening proposes two classifications, as shown on the screen. The east block is proposed at a minimum of 2,200 square feet, and the center and west blocks are proposed at a minimum of 2,000 square feet. As has been established in adjacent subdivisions, the classification includes exceptions for ranch-style houses, which reduces the classification for ranches only. Typically, there is a 14, or a 400-square-foot reduction between the classification for non-ranches and ranches. However, the applicant is only proposing a 200-square-foot reduction in this case, with the east block having a 2,000-square-foot ranch and the center and west blocks having an 1,800-square-foot ranch. Staff reviewed the plans and recommends approval of the development as it meets the requirements of the UDC and the Conference of Plan, with the one modification to increase the maximum lot width from 120 feet to 137 feet to accommodate the lots that are along street curves. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning and approval of the PUD concept plan with five conditions. The planning commission has approved a preliminary plat and final plan contingent on approval of the concept plan. And I will stand for any questions.
Are there any questions from council? Councilmember Fowler?
Your Honor, my question may be more for the developer. I think staff is aware of it. We've kind of went over some things today, but I guess I'll find out where the developer stands on the issue, so.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
Yes, go ahead.
Could you speak to the, we have the photograph of the fence, and then we have those little shrub thingies? I don't know what else to call them. I trust that that landscaping is not...
Yeah, that, the wall, the only, the wall is what the focus is in that image, so the landscaping, that's just an example.
So what we saw last time for landscaping is what we would expect this time?
Yes, they would still have, it's in the packet here, they would still have the wall and then landscaping in between the wall and 7 Highway.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Matt. Developer, like, come, be sworn in, and answer any questions, make comments, clarification.
He's on the court, just wondering about giving this case to the truth, if you have to. Kyle Jones, 120 Southeast 30th Street, Lee Summit, Missouri. Good evening. How's everyone doing?
Good.
Great. I'm here for any questions that you may have.
Councilmember Fowler?
Yes, Your Honor. So, staff, do you have the map that I was sent on December the 7th?
I do have that.
I'll let you bring it up, but so, my question is going to be, I've got an email, right after the council meeting where we denied it, I got an email very shortly after that from Brad Kemp, and he was requesting that, he proposed changes and requests that we go ahead and evaluate the proposed changes. I'll read from his email. Attached are the revised projects, submittal documents reflecting the six-foot masonry fence, and thanks to the developer for doing that, and the code compliance step-down square footage model. The submittal has also been sent to Matt Wright, Community Development. And this is what was in the email, and there is a classification D, 2,000 square feet, and there's a classification C in the green area, 2,200 square feet. And that is what I made my decision on. I do not see anything less than 2,000 square feet or 2,200, and/or any other letters other than C or D. And so I would not have proposed bringing it back for discussion had I not witnessed or seen this map. So, and that's, that's the line I intend to hold for myself, but I guess that is not the way staff has inter, well, I think staff can see that, you don't see any E on there or anything less than 2,000 either, right?
Well, if I, if I may, then this map was a map that I put together for the applicant to help explain the minimum step-down. In this, I only put the minimum classification. I did not include the exceptions for the ranch-style homes.
And where is that language in our code?
That is, the dual classifications or exceptions for ranches is not in the code. However, based on the precedent that has been set with the Shores, Greenbrier, Ridgewood Place, and the Estates in Chapman Farms, there was no modification, special modifications for those. So that's why staff is recommending approval of that, allowing that ranch exception.
I hope you can see my dilemma is that I hadn't, I was reading the code, and I don't know if it's unwritten, I don't know where that unwritten rule is at. And the code basically says, it's fairly clear, C and D and what the square footage is. It doesn't say anything about the type of housing. So, I guess to the developer, what, will you honor this map as it's shown?
Yeah, our intent was not to say that we're going to do a certain size and try to slide in a smaller, we were just going off of the code by being that, like Matt says, that a two, as an example, a 2,000-square-foot two-story, and then typically it's reduced down by 400 feet for all the communities that have been previously approved in that Chapman Farms area, so a ranch would be acceptable at 1,600. So that was our intent, was to go off that. I understand that's not, that's still there, but that being said, if, if we need to stick to the 2,000 and the 2,200, and regardless of house style, that's it. We'll do that.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that. I will make that proposed amendment tonight as we go through that portion, and I guess we'll see where the council is on that.
Okay. But our, yeah, our intent was just to follow exactly how the, how the code lays out by block and didn't match that up.
And my apologies, if there's been confusion, I think staff and, I guess as a council member, I was, wasn't aware of that, different interpretation.
Yep.
Any other questions from the developer? Councilmember Gobert?
No, I just wanted to echo Councilman Fowler's comments, because the, the chart, if you will, is what I looked at and made my decision based upon that when we talked about bringing it back up here. So I just was looking for confirmation on the square footage, as opposed to, some of the things we received had four or five different classifications in it, which is just not acceptable.
Right. And for the record, the chart that's up there now, there is some black lines on there on the lower left that say D and E, that is not on the drawing that I received. Is that correct, Matt?
Yeah, that is correct, yeah. This is, this is the version of the chart that has the exceptions for ranches as well, so this is the one that you would have received. The one that's on screen now.
Yep. So again, I appreciate the extra effort on this.
Going to go to the city clerk?
Yes, if I could, we will be entering this exhibit, the dual classifications map, as exhibit number two into the record.
Okay. Any other questions from the developer? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go to the public. Is there one in the audience who'd like to speak in support of? Support of?
Opposition?
Okay, opposition two. Opposition two, I do have one document here, Bob Chaney. Okay, would you come up and be sworn in?
It is. My name is Bob Chaney. I live at 1008 Southeast Scarlet Court in Blue Springs. Thank you for the opportunity to address the council and mayor. So I registered online to address you in opposition, not so much in opposition to the actual development. I think it's wonderful, and I commend the developer for bringing it forward. What I do question is why you're requiring a fence in this case, and I understand there may be some reasons for that, but particularly for those in District 3, I would urge you to reconsider requiring a fence in this case, particularly when the developer has shown that the homes are going to be more, or almost 10 feet below grade level of 7 Highway. So it seems odd to require a fence in general, but certainly in this specific case. So I'd ask you to reconsider that.
All right. Any questions, comments?
Yeah, Your Honor, just a little bit of feedback from my thoughts on that. I appreciate the input. That was certainly discussed at one point about not having a fence there. My, where I come from, if somebody is driving along 7 Highway and they're in the back of a pickup, things blow out or whatever, that fence will probably keep it from blowing in the back of people's yards and the opposite direction. If the kids are in the backyard and maybe they're playing with some things, it may keep some things from heading out towards 7 Highway.
Any other comments? Any other comments from the council on that?
Nope. Seeing none, thank you for your testimony.
I would like to add one thing.
Okay.
This council has approved previous developments that did not require a fence. All that you required was a berm, and so it's odd now that it's being required in this case.
Okay, thank you for your, okay.
Just one other, so I think, I know down on Colburn Road with, that does not have the speed limits of a 7 Highway with, you know, dual lanes, that there was no fence down there. However, on 7 Highway and this closeness to 7 Highway in recent years, I cannot remember anything that didn't, matter of fact, we talked about, this is one of the first ones we've seen with houses this close to the highway. Do you have an example I should be thinking about?
Colburn Road is the one that I was thinking of.
Okay, yep.
Yes. Okay, great.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I will, I also want to say that we have not had any housing developments right up against 7 Highway, and it is a major road. It's a four-lane highway, and I think that the consideration there needs to be a little different than when we talk about a Colburn Road or some of the local subdivisions. You don't have the speed, you don't have the amount of traffic, and that was the biggest concern for me.
Sure, understand that. I believe the setback here is 50 feet, is that correct?
I believe that they're, that's what they are proposing, is 50 feet.
Right. So it's a matter of opinion, right, if it's right next to Highway 7, but I appreciate your, your input. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in opposition two? Opposition two, closes public hearing. We will go to the introduction and reading of bill number 4941.
I'll introduce, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of bill number 4941, in ordinance rezoning property from SF7 PUDRO, single-family planned unit development restricted overlay, SOPUDRO, service office planned unit development restricted overlay, CBRO, central business restricted overlay, and RCRO, regional commercial restricted overlay, to SF7 PUDRO, single-family planned unit development restricted overlay.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, councilmember?
Yes, I believe that the proposed amendment would probably go better on the next bill, that is the concept plan versus the rezoning. Does that city attorney would agree with that? Okay, I'll hold off till then, then.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'd like to ask a question to clarify some square footage, if I could.
Okay, go ahead.
So we, if we do this, this C and D, and we don't, previously it was ranch houses and a step-down of 200 feet, I think you said, is that correct?
That's correct.
So with the C and D, the minimum livable space, you could put a 1,200-square-foot house, one floor underneath of a 1,000-square-foot floor, right? So I guess I'm asking, are we kicking ourselves in the, in the foot, so to speak? Because you could make a little more boxy house without doing the ranch?
The, the square footage is based on the total finished floor area. It does not get into any minimums on first level basement, second level.
So if we, if we had the ranch homes that we talked about, the minimum square footage as it stands right now is what, again?
As the applicant had proposed, it would be 1,800 square foot and 2,000 square feet for a ranch. What is proposed would be to eliminate that exception and just have 2,020, 200 square-foot minimum. So regardless, if it's a two-story or ranch, it would have to meet that minimum.
So I know I'm belaboring the point, but that would mean you'd have a footprint of 2,000 square feet or a footprint of 1,800 square feet minimum on the ground, if it were a ranch?
Not necessarily. You could have, because it wouldn't necessarily have to be the whole 1,800 square feet on the main level, you could have it smaller on the main level and have a finished basement, so split that in half.
Oh.
So you could have 1,000 feet on the main level and 800 square feet in the lower level. Or based on what is proposed, if the 2,000 becomes the minimum for a ranch, it would be 1,000 and 1,000.
So basements are considered livable space, finished or not finished?
As long as they're finished. If it's unfinished, it is not considered in that calculation.
Your Honor, just a quick sentence out of the, out of the ordinance, because I think it kind of explains it. Livable floor area shall not include open screen portions, garages, basements, except that finished basements designated for immediate living space shall count towards the overall floor area for residential buildings. Finished basements shall mean finished walls, flooring, ceilings, cabinets, shelving, doors, windows, electrical outlets, and plumbing. So.
Anyone else? Okay. All in favor? We had a motion, a second, we had a discussion. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All in full same sign?
No.
We had one no? Okay.
That's Councilman Levisay.
Levisay said no.
Thank you. All right. Second reading of bill number 4942, excuse me, sorry, I jumped ahead there.
4941?
4941. I was trying to get out of reading. Second reading of bill number 4941, in ordinance rezoning property from SF7 PUDRO, single-family planned unit development restricted overlay, SOPUDRO, service office planned unit development restricted overlay, CBRO, central business restricted overlay, and RCRO, regional commercial restricted overlay, to SF7 PUDRO, single-family planned unit development restricted overlay.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on a second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Levisay?
No.
Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Motion carries with a vote of six to one, given ordinance number 5075.
Next, we have introduction and reading of bill number 4942.
I'll introduce, Your Honor. First reading of bill number 4942, in ordinance approving the retreat at Chapman Farms planned unit development concept plan.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on the first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Councilmember Fowler?
Yes, Your Honor, per our previous conversation, I would like to propose an amendment, and I'll let the city attorney correct me if I need to say it differently, but I'm going to propose that the, the P, that the planned development plans go with the most conservative interpretation of Section 407.110 of the minimum livable square footage related to classification C and D, which is 2,200 square foot and 2,000 square foot.
Okay, you have a, you have a motion for an amendment, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor of the amendment proposed by Councilmember Fowler, say aye?
Aye.
All in full same sign? Motion carries. Second reading.
First, first reading as amended.
As amended.
Right?
Yes.
Or do we get, yeah.
Yeah, we need to go ahead and then vote again as amended. We voted.
Oh, okay, okay.
We haven't voted on the first reading, so this is the, all in favor?
Yeah, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All in full same sign?
Thank you.
It is now amended.
There you go. All right. Second reading of bill number 4942, as amended, in ordinance approving the retreat at Chapman Farms planned unit development concept plan.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved as amended on a second final reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on it? Councilmember Fowler?
Again, Your Honor, this has been a long process for the developer. I appreciate their patience with this, and hopefully we have now got it, everything worked out, and I appreciate everything the developers done on this one.
All right. Your Honor? Yes, go ahead.
I second what Councilmember Fowler has to say. I appreciate your patience with us, and thank you.
Anybody else? Roll call.
Councilmember Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Culpepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Levisay?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 5076.
Okay, next we have another public hearing coming up here.
Yes, sir. This is the, the city has one exhibit to enter into the record. City Council information form dated January 11, 2022 with the following attachments: staff report with attachments, application with attachments, affidavit of publication in the examiner on December 23, 2021, 185-foot notification map, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site, copy of letter sent to said property owners, title for land use section, Blue Springs code of ordinances by reference, 2014 comprehensive plan by reference, bill approving the rezoning, and bill approving the planned development concept plan. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Okay, Matt, you're up again.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before you this evening, a request for a rezoning and a PUD concept plan for White Oak Mixed Juice, which is a proposed office and multifamily redevelopment of the White Oak Professional Buildings at the southeast corner of Southwest Lotterell and Southwest Sunset Avenue. Current property includes three lots on approximately 3.41 acres and a zone GB General Business. The first request is to rezone the subject property from GB General Business to PD Mixed Juice, which is a planned development. This is the first rezoning request under the new planned development standards that were approved in July 2021. 2014 comprehensive plan included the subject property as part of a distinct destination, which includes areas adjacent to the Highway 7 and 40 intersections, and distinct destinations are defined as a mix of larger scale and regionally significant land uses that are unique within the community and the region. The C1 area plan classifies the subject property as high-density residential, which are areas of predominantly multifamily, buildings that are primarily located in corridors and/or areas of predominantly neighborhoods and centers of corridors. areas of predominantly neighborhoods and centers of corridors. The intent of the PD zoning district is to encourage unique and high-quality neighborhoods, commercial or mixed-use development through an integrated development plan, which provides flexibility to the standard zoning district regulations. Through the PD zoning, the applicant is requesting to allow any land uses permitted by right or as part of a PD in the multifamily zoning districts, neighborhood business, and service office zoning districts. The second request this evening is for the PD concept plan to go along with that rezoning to a PD, which covers the entire 3.41-acre property as a one-lot redevelopment. The proposed development includes 102 apartment units and 10,000 square feet of commercial space within three buildings. The north building on the left of the screen would include 10,000 square feet of office on the ground level with two-story apartments above totaling 24 units, and the center and south buildings each would be three stories totaling 39 units each. The net density for the site is 29.91 units per acre. As part of the PD, the commercial space may include a mix of office, service, and retail uses. The most common land uses that may be included are included on page eight of the staff report. However, the applicant believes most of this will be used as office space. Access to the site will be consolidated from the current five points of access along Luttrell down to three access points. The northern access point is for the north building. The center and southern access points provide access to the backside of the two buildings for a loop drive for parking access. As part of the redevelopment of the site, five-foot sidewalks are required along both Luttrell and Sunset Avenue. Through the PD zoning and concept plan, the site is being reviewed under the mixed-use building type, as well as the neighborhood business zoning district standards for buffering, landscaping, and outdoor lighting. The site does meet all but two requirements of the mixed-use building type. The first modification is to waive the maximum front 10-foot setback for all buildings. Currently, all buildings are shown greater than a 10-foot setback. The second modification is to allow the building design to be reviewed under the residential building design standards instead of the non-residential design standards. The applicant has also provided a Schedule C parking memo to determine the minimum parking standards for the site. With the shared parking and bike parking reductions, there are 179 spaces proposed. The shared parking is based on the site being used for both residential units and retail service spaces, which have different parking demand peak times. Based on that memo, the peak demand will be for 183 spaces on weekends and evenings, when 90% of spaces are needed for both apartments and commercial space. As each building has provided exterior bike parking, a further reduction in four spaces is warranted, as it is assumed that some bike parking, some parking demand will be from bike trips instead of vehicle trips. That reduction results in the 179 spaces as proposed on the site. In addition to the previously mentioned modifications to the mixed-use building type, there are three other modifications proposed for the development. The first is to reduce the internal sidewalk width from eight feet to six feet for the sidewalk along the north building facade and the parking area. The second is to adjust the minimum 10-foot terrace frontage depth to seven feet, which would match the minimum landscape buffer requirements, and to allow a one-foot driveway and drive and aisle encroachment into the seven-foot terrace along Sunset, which is to accommodate the additional one foot of pavement there for vehicle turnaround, pulling out of the parking, those last two parking spaces, and then also a full seven-foot encroachment of this northwesternmost parking space. And the reason for that is due to the additional right-of-way that is being acquired here at the corner that makes it difficult to accommodate that uniform parking space. The last modification is a waiver for the height for wall-mounted lighting for the buildings, which is capped at 30 feet above grade for neighborhood business zoning. As the buildings are proposed to be up to 45 feet tall, this would prohibit outdoor lighting on the third story of the building. Staff believes that these modifications enhance the development by increasing building setbacks from Luttrell Road to provide more green space and landscaping between the street and buildings, enhance architectural design standards, as the residential design standards are more restrictive and stringent than the non-residential design standards, as well as landscaping and buffering that is consistent, a consistent depth along the entire perimeter of the site. The site includes three buildings, each three stories. The north building, as shown on the screen, is a full three stories with, again, the ground-level commercial and two-story apartments above. The center and south buildings are two-story facing Luttrell, and then a third story, the third story is created by the lower level that is tucked into the topography, similar to the design of the existing office buildings. Building design provides four-sided architecture with a mix of materials, projections, entrance features, windows, and variations in the massing and the roof lines. And then, materials include masonry along the ground floor and second-floor street levels, with the remainder being a mix of cement board siding and paneling in a variety of colors for added visual interest. The building design also takes into consideration both the existing site and the surrounding properties, particularly the center and south buildings, which will have the appearance of a two-story building from Luttrell for a more sensitive transition to the two-story apartments to the south, which are shown on the screen, and the single and two-story single-family homes across the street. Landscape buffers and terrace frontage requirements are provided in the staff report with preliminary plant unit requirements. A conceptual site plan, which is on the screen, has been provided that includes the general layout of landscaping and buffering around the site, as well as an outdoor pool and amenity area between the south and center buildings. Landscaping and amenities will be reviewed in greater detail through the PD final plan and site plan design review. Staff review the rezoning requests under the nine review criteria included in the staff report and finds that the request is in accordance with the comprehensive plan and the area plan for the property. The proposed zoning and redevelopment of the site with PD zoning is appropriate for a mixed-use development. Approval of the application could encourage the redevelopment of other vacant or underutilized properties in the area and could set a positive precedent of greater interest in mixed-use developments. Denial of the application would result in the existing development staying as is for the time being and could discourage redevelopment of the property or similar properties in the area with other mixed-use or multifamily development. Since the properties were first developed in the 1980s, significant changes have occurred adjacent to the property, including the complete redevelopment of White Oak Plaza into White Oak Marketplace. This is one of the last few remaining properties within the Highway 7 and 40 distinct destination area that has not been redeveloped over the past decade. Based on this review criteria, staff does recommend approval of the rezoning of the site to PD mixed use. Staff also reviewed the PD concept plan under the seven review criteria included in the staff report and finds that the development is compatible with the area and will not have any, or will not have adverse impacts on the surrounding area, based on both the sensitive design of the site and buildings, as well as the additional reinvestment that is likely to have a positive impact on the surrounding area. The PD concept plan meets five goals, or meets multiple goals of the, or meets five goals and multiple targets within the comprehensive plan, including integrating housing into existing neighborhoods and in locations with multimodal transportation options due to existing and future improvements. Based on the review criteria, staff does recommend approval of the concept plan with two conditions. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on Monday, January 10, at which one citizen spoke in opposition to the request, and one citizen stated that they weren't in opposition but had additional questions related to rents and construction. Opposition to the request was primarily in regards to traffic concerns along Luttrell Road and adding additional housing that could contribute to increased traffic and pedestrian conflicts. The Planning Commission recommended approval of both the rezoning and the concept plan, with nine in favor and one opposed, and also approved a preliminary plat contingent on approval of the concept plan, and I will stand for any questions.
Any questions? Oh, Matt from the council, Councilmember Fowler?
Yes, Your Honor. I guess while you've got that on the screen there, if you could blow that up just a little bit, maybe a couple of questions on it. As we look close to the street there, I can see those green trees, it looks like, and those are shown growing out into the street and also into the building, it looks like. Do we normally allow something like that in the right-of-way?
The sidewalk, the back of the sidewalk here would be the right-of-way line, so anywhere back beyond that, they could plant the tree. Ideally, they would center the location of that tree halfway between the sidewalk and the building, just so there's some clearance from both of those items, and there's likely certain types of street trees that they could provide that grow up and not out as much, and I believe the applicant may be able to respond a little bit more to that of some different tree types that could work without interfering too much with the sidewalk or the buildings.
Then I guess, page 164, a couple slides down from this, want to make sure that, if we zoom in on that, I think it says the sidewalk is five feet. Is that correct, five feet wide?
The public sidewalk is five feet, yes.
Yeah, and then, and then from that, there is a, I see a seven-foot BL, is that building line?
That is the build line, correct.
Okay, and that is seven feet beyond the sidewalk?
That would be, it looks like in this situation...
Yeah, there you go.
The side, the back of the sidewalk up here is approximately where the property line is, but due to either how the right-of-way was dedicated, the sidewalk may not be exactly at the back of the build line, or at the back of the, or the front property line, so there may still be a couple of feet in some of these areas that is still within the right-of-way.
And so, I guess if I'm looking at that, basically five feet on the sidewalk, and then it looks like 11 feet to the building, so it's roughly 16 feet, maybe 17 feet from the side of the street to the building.
Yeah, in certain locations, this, this one here is 11.6, and it looks like there's maybe a two-foot gap there, so roughly 16 to 18 feet probably from the back of the curb.
Yeah, I think that's going to be probably, some of my concern is these two buildings being so close to Luttrell. You know, if I looked at them and being on the backside of this, but that is a lot of development right that close to the road. One more slide down, I guess I do have a question on 165 and on the left-hand side a bit. There is some utility easements that are going to be taken out? Maybe I've got the wrong slide.
There are some existing utility easements that are in place that would need to be vacated.
And what are those utility easements?
Those, more than likely, they follow, as is common, is when a lot is platted, they typically run utility easements through the, down the side property lines, so that matches where the existing property lines are, the lot lines are. There may or may not be any utilities within there, but those would need to be relocated and that vacated prior to a final plat being approved for this development.
Okay. And I think going on the planned development, when it comes to zoning, it says the planned development standards shall permit all land uses allowed by right and through a planned development in the multifamily zoning districts MF 10, MF 14, MF 18, neighborhood business, and surface and office. So that just about covers them all, it seems like. And then, a little bit farther down, you say the proposed development for redevelopment of a commercial development into a mixed-use development. This is, this is a unique development, as it would be the first vertical mixed-use development outside of downtown Blue Springs. And when I think of downtown, you know, the buildings are a lot closer to the road, they go up high, and, you know, I kind of get that downtown feeling, and that's, that's kind of what I would, this reminds me of on Luttrell there, being that close.
Yeah, that is, that is the building type that is being used, is a mixed-use building type, which is more common in the downtown, but the 2015 UDC does allow, or open that up to potentially other locations in Blue Springs, particularly in these types of distinct destination areas where there's a high concentration of retail services, other uses that, where you could build additional density within walking distance of housing.
Okay. And then the parking, I think you said, was not, didn't quite meet the 191 by code then?
That would be what the minimum code requirement is, but the applicant has provided their own Schedule C based on their experience with similar types of housing products elsewhere in the metro area. And that, that was provided in, as an attachment to the plans with similar types of multifamily development in similar context.
All right. Those are my questions for now, Your Honor, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Councilmember?
Me?
Yeah.
I always ask this question, but I don't see, did fire trucks go in there? Do they have to fight the fire off of Luttrell?
They would have, yeah, they would have the opportunity, it's a 26-foot drive aisle, actually in this case, it's a 28-foot drive aisle and parts of it, minimum to meet fire code is 26 feet. So they would still be able to get a fire truck through there if the fire department so chose to go back there. There's some other items related to fire hiring locations and other items that the fire department will review as part of a final plan.
And you said the minimum space between the building line and the actual asphalt on Luttrell was 11 point some odd feet?
The minimum setbacks...
Not the setback, but where the building is and where the curb ends and the asphalt starts?
Yeah, that's roughly, so you've got a five-foot sidewalk here and approximately 11 and a half, so at least 16 and a half, growing to probably closer to 18 feet from the back of the curb on Luttrell.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman?
Thank you, Your Honor. The space between the building line and the curb, is that more or less what is, from the multifamily down the street, that Mall of Fall Creek?
Those are probably going to be significantly further setback, because they also have intervening, if you pull up the aerial on that.
It seems like Mall of Fall Creek has more open area between the building line and the sidewalk.
Yeah, and that, of course, I was under a previous UDC, and these are strictly an apartment complex, whereas this is a mixed-use development. But this, this northern building here is probably a 25 setback off of the front property line, and then, most of the buildings have intervening parking, which pushes those back to probably well over 50 or 60 feet, I would imagine.
But those first two buildings that are, that are going to be on the southern portion, those are, I mean, that's apartments. I know it's, the whole project is mixed-use, but those are apartment buildings there.
Yeah.
So, to me, they're not that different, I mean, Mall of Fall Creek's apartments also.
Correct, yeah, so this gives a little bit better of a visual of the comparison between those, those two setbacks.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thanks, Matt. Does a developer like to come up, just one in, answering now and answer some questions?
Good evening, Mayor Ross, Council, Tim Homberg, NSPJ Architects, 3515 West 75th Street, Prairie Village, Kansas. I'm here this evening with the developer, Tyler Salee, as well as representatives from our civil group, as well as the architectural group. Matt's given a pretty comprehensive overview of the project, we really don't have a lot more to add to it, and we're just kind of stand here for questions.
Councilmember Edmondson?
Yes, at the Planning Commission, one of the commissioners brought up concern about the east property line and the elevation change there with the adjacent property, and there's an existing wall in there, and, and looking at that, I know it's not in code that we have to, but it would be, to me, I would think it'd be nice to put some sort of fencing up in there, even if you tried to match the fencing at the adjacent property to the south, the fencing in the brick part, just down that eastern boundary to make a, an actual visual barrier, so to speak, through there. I know that drop-off of, neither one, I have code, or community development, and I did not go out and measure it, but it's probably anywhere in the six-foot range down through there, and so, that's not going to be able to be banked off and sloped off, it's still going to be there. So, would you be open to putting in, like I say, a fence of some sort along there, either ornamental or wood or plastic along that line, just as a, as a visual barrier to prevent people from going off of that?
Sure, and response to that, I've got a couple of pictures in our presentation that show some photographic evidence of kind of the different angles of that area, so if I may allow...
Yeah.
Matt to plug this in.
And Mayor, if I may, these slides there being presented will be entered as exhibit number two to the public hearing.
All right.
And Matt will be like the next to the last page in the presentation, we can kind of jump directly to that. And so if you kind of zoom in, the three photographs kind of depict what the, what's kind of happening between the two properties. As you can see, it's basically a manicured grass sloped area. There is that kind of poured concrete swale that allows water on the, that allows water curling at the back of the lot to accumulate in that and get shot to the north, as it kind of slopes downhill. You can kind of see from this angle here that the current development to our east has already started planting quite a bit of landscaping through that area, and we feel that there's not really any direct cliff or drop-off... cliff or drop-off that would be a hazard to someone if they were to go into that area. The thing we would propose, and I think that's already on our, our plan, is that there's gonna be additional enhanced landscaping through that area. So we're probably gonna have not just overstory trees, but obviously shrubs that are low-lying to kind of be that visual barrier for someone to go through there. And kind of the, the, the case against a fence is that a fence just becomes upkeep, or it's just a really expensive fence. So we'd prefer to have something of a enhanced landscape barrier that will grow and mature and become more attractive over the years, rather than something that becomes a matter of upkeep.
Okay.
House member, Fowler?
Sure. You can bring it up on slide 164, but the, the, right about the center, scroll down and then blow that area up that's, that's got the street width in it.
Okay.
Yeah. There you go. So, so we see the 50 feet width of Luttrell driveway, and then 25 feet on each side. You know, that's 25 feet for the lane, but then five of that is used up by the sidewalk. So basically 20 feet lane, but yet the distance between that black line is, is like 11 feet. So that's like half a lane there. I mean, from the sidewalk, if you go up the sidewalk, that's just really close. See my concern on safety there?
Not really. Actually, one thing that we've found in our development of properties of this nature, when you bring buildings up close to the street, it actually has a traffic calming effect, because you do have a little bit more intimate nature between the buildings. So people tend to slow down through that action. The, the sidewalks and the units, you know, since their center corridor, people will be parking on the backside, going into the building from the backside into the center corridor and into their unit. So it's not like someone will be parking on the street and then walking on the sidewalk into that unit. It's more for the pedestrian, you know, activating the pedestrian nature of the units that are on the ground level to again depict that, that townhome look that we're going for and having those kind of discreet entrances, even though the stacked two-story is not a single unit, it's actually one unit and one unit stacked.
Okay. Anyone else? House member?
Yeah, I had two things. I know Matt mentioned the lighting, because the building is three stories, but that lighting will be controlled, so there won't be any affecting the families across the street, I assume.
Correct. The same stipulations for bleed-over light through the photometric plan will still apply to this. And again, we're only two stories on the Luttrell side. So generally, the lighting on the architectural facades are kind of at each balcony. There's gonna be like a single little bulb fixture, just to give a little light in someone, in case someone wants to set out on their balcony, and maybe at the entrances to the stairs. And that's, you know, that'll be, there won't be additional lighting enhancements to kind of light up the facade. And again, we'll be, you know, kind of constrained by giving the photometric plan with the cutoff levels at the site boundaries.
The other thing I wanted to hear your comment on is the line of sight at Luttrell, at that intersection. And we have pictures with lots of trees, and I don't know whether staff wants to address that. But how's that gonna affect the line of sight going around that corner there across from McDonald's?
They will be required to keep any landscaping outside, any landscaping generally is it over, may ask, Public Works Director, for Sandy to weigh in. But I believe it's anything over three feet in height is not allowed in the site triangle.
Correct.
So what we're seeing here, on, this is just strictly to look pretty. This isn't what this is gonna look like.
Yeah, this is, this is a conceptual plan. We will review a final landscape, in more, landscape plan in more detail to make sure that there is not any landscaping within the site triangle. There certainly wouldn't be any trees allowed. There may be some of the low-growing shrubs allowed to screen the parking.
All right. And I'm, I'm also concerned about the closeness of the building to the street, particularly start putting landscaping in there.
Again, you know, to kind of answer the earlier question about the size of the trees, yeah, our landscape department got a little overzealous on putting the trees in there. But obviously, we're gonna work with Matt to put appropriate-sized trees in that frontage, obviously recognizing the street corners. And, you know, there's enough, we basically have 11 foot of space to where we can get, a landscape bed is generally like four to five feet. So we're actually gonna get an opportunity to have a landscape bed as well as grass before we hit that curb. So it's gonna be a nice frontage leading up to the front of the buildings.
All right, thank you.
House member Fowler?
I just have one more thing here. This has got, under the parking lot, you're gonna have the stormwater detention.
Yep.
That is really rare. I don't know that I've seen a lot of that. That must, it sounds like expensive. So, but if we're talking about heavyweight vehicles on there, what's that gonna be rated for? You, you mentioned the fire truck a while ago, so.
Mm-hmm. They're fire truck rated. Basically, they're, they're half-dome, so they're very stable, and they're meant to be placed under parking fields.
Okay, all right. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Interesting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Just for the public. In one order, it's like speaking support of, support of, opposition two, opposition two. Close this public hearing. Next we have introduction, reading bill number 4943.
I'll introduce you, Your Honor. First reading of bill number 4943, an ordinance rezoning property from GB, general business, to PD, mixed-use, planned development, mixed-use.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second? Second. House member Edmondson?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. This is a real unique project. As, as has been stated, it's one of the first ones around. And Councilman Lovisey made me remember a meeting we had way back when, before Price Shopper went in, when, when someone mentioned a comment that they thought that, that the intersection of 7 Highway and 40 Highway was like a B-rate. You know, all the, all the gloriness was over at I-70. And since that time, and, and we sat there at that meeting and said, no, you're wrong. This is an up-and-coming area right here, and back to what it used to be when I first moved out in Blue Springs, as being a nice hub of commerce and stuff. I've seen similar projects like this in other parts of the metro area, and it does sit close to the road, but they, but it fits very well. That is a 24, or 25 mile an hour speed limit down there, so it is a fairly slow speed limit. So I, I will be supporting this project. I think it's a unique project, and, and it will go well with the surrounding area, and hopefully do well with increasing the commerce as far as those businesses around there, both on Sunset and then also Mall of Fall Creek and Price Shopper, that area. So I will be supporting this.
Another comment? Okay, y'all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign?
Aye.
Second reading of bill number 4943, an ordinance rezoning property from GB, general business, to PD, mixed-use, planned development, mixed-use.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Second.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilmember Erickson?
No.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Cole Pepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Lovisey?
Aye.
Fowler?
No.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried with the vote of five to two, given ordinance number 5077.
Next we have introduction, reading of bill number 4944.
I'll introduce, Your Honor.
First reading of bill number 4944, an ordinance approving White Oak, mixed-use, planned development, concept plan.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Same sign?
Aye.
Two ayes, noes?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't see it very well.
Okay.
So we had two noes on the first reading, okay. And that was Fowler and Erickson?
Right.
Thank you. All right. So, second reading of bill number 4944, an ordinance approving White Oak, mixed-use, planned development, concept plan.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on the second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilmember Edmondson?
Aye.
Cole Pepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Lovisey?
Aye.
Fowler?
No.
Erickson?
No.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Motion carries with the vote of five to two, given ordinance number 5078.
Next we have a public hearing on Enterprises Sunset Plaza.
Mayor, the city has one exhibit to enter to the record. City Council information form dated January 11, 2022, with the following attachments: staff report with attachments, application with attachment, affidavit of publication in the examiner on December 23, 2021, 185-foot notification map, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site, copy of letter sent to said property owners, title for land use section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference, 2014 comparative plan by reference, and bill approving conditional use permit. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Okay, DeMarcus? House member?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Before you this evening, it's a request for a conditional use permit with alternative development standards for the relocation of a short-term loan service business, Advanced America, from 802 Southwest 40 Highway to 792 Southwest 40 Highway in the Sunset Plaza cen, center. The property is owned GB-PUD, general business, planned unit development, which allows for the relocation with the approval of a conditional use permit. Staff reviewed the request for the conditional use permit under the short-term loan service review criteria for those standards to accommodate the relocation. Based on a review criteria, the CUP did not meet two of the criterias. To accommodate the relocation, the loan service, there was two alternative development standards that was needed. The first being the proposed plan does not meet the 2,500 feet requirement from any other short-term loan service or gem dealer. The two businesses within the 25, 2,500 feet of the relocation are Title Max title loans, which is approximately 660 feet, and Patriot Pawn and Guns, which is approximately 1,400 feet. The second requirement not met is the requirement that not more than one conditional use permit for a short-term loan service shall be issued per 12,000 persons that make up the population of the city of Blue Springs. The city's most recent population, 8,603, there may be more, they may be four, four short-term loan service businesses permitted within the city limits. The city currently has seven licensed short-term loan service businesses. As all existing, existing licensed businesses predate the city's establishment of the special use standards, August 2007, none of them have a conditional use permit. Although the city currently exceeds the number of licensed businesses, the request does not increase the number of short-term loan services, as it is a relocation of an existing business. Relocating Advanced America from 802 Southwest 40 Highway to 792 Southwest 40 Highway in the Sunset Plaza Center would allow the path site on 40 Highway to be redeveloped. The planning commission held a public hearing on January 10, at which no one spoke in favor or in opposition to the request. The planning commission recommended approval of the conditional use permit with alternative development standards sticks in favor, four opposed. Based on a review criteria for both alternative development standards and the conditional use permit review, staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit review with alternative development standards, as the relocation does not result in increase in the number of short loan services, as it allows the path site along 40 Highway frontage to be redeveloped. I stand for any questions you want, Mayor.
I just wanna make sure I'm clear on that 12,000 feet. I guess you're saying that with the number of businesses right now, we do not meet that 12,000, or 12,000 requirement of citizens? You can have so many businesses per 12,000?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so we currently do not meet it. So if, if it was a new business, not a relocation, they would not be able to apply, or?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, okay. But because it's a relocation, then, then, okay. Thanks.
Anyone else? Councilmember Kayla?
Your Honor, isn't this business, wasn't it grandfathered in originally?
I think so.
Wouldn't that be an issue for later president, if we, if this is all changed, to allow being moved for other grandfathers to be able to move?
I would defer to our city attorney.
So, good question. We discussed that prior to the planning commission meeting, in case that question came up. As was presented, there currently are no short-term loan businesses with CUPs. And by applying for a CUP in this move, that brings this business into, the only business that will be in compliance with that, they were grandfathered in, but this would be, bring them into compliance. And under our new alternative development standards code section 403160, this council is allowed to grant relief from the code provisions because of the unique circumstances.
Okay, so help me out here. If we allow it to happen, wouldn't that make an extra, then, number of payday loans? Because don't we have a limit of payday loans? So if we're moving it, then that brings the grandfather off of it, and then that would allow making it more payday loans, correct?
There's not a new business coming in. So, a new business couldn't come in and use their grandfathered.
Okay. But if it's, and, and I kind of understand that part of, but being grandfathered into a location, and now they're moving the locations, it seems like that would delete any authority that they had to begin with, with being grandfathered, being allowed to be grandfathered.
Right. And, but you, as a council, are allowed to grant that.
Okay.
Your Honor, to echo what Councilmember Kayla's saying, I would equate this to like the sign code. If we have a particular business who has grandfathered in because they have an uncompliant sign, and they say, wait, I wanna move to that property over there and keep my uncompliant sign grandfather, we wouldn't allow that. We would say they're changing locations, they have to update everything. And so they're essentially trying to take what we've allowed as noncompliance with them. And that, that doesn't stick with the business. A noncompliance code does not stick. When the business moves, it sticks with the property for a limited time for that purpose. And so it seems like this is a complete removal. I mean, the whole point of putting those limitations on, on these particular types of businesses was that eventually, through attrition, we would get down to what our cap is. So right now, our cap is four, and we're at seven. It's this type of scenario by which we would get down to four, because we would not allow that business to continue if they were wanting to move. So I think that's where we are in this situation, is this is supposed to happen, and they're supposed to not be able to move, and they're supposed to not be able to take that with them.
Okay. Anyone else?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I agree with, with, with both councilmen on that. This clearly is, is an issue where you're taking a business that maybe they don't wanna lose the rent on that one, so they can develop the property where they're sitting, and hopefully get it moved into a property that's sitting vacant within that project. And I commend them for doing that. But it's also an industry that we tried to regulate through our ordinances to get them down to that four. And this is a perfect example where, through attrition, as, as Chris said, we could actually bring that down by one. So we'd still be two of this type of facility over what our cap is, based on our current population. If I, am I correct on that, Matt?
Yeah, it would be four until we hit 60,000, and then it would increase to five. But yeah, we do have seven currently. But as city attorney Jackie Summer mentioned, we do not currently have any of these that have been legally licensed as a conditional use permit. So this would be the first one, which would then leave three more that could be issued. But since this is a relocation, we're, we're trying to bring them into compliance with the conditional use permit process.
So if, if I gather what you're saying, then if to do that, they still don't comply because they're within 600 feet of Title Max, they're within 1,400 feet of Patriot Pawn. So there's still a concentration of them that are within this certain area that they wouldn't comply, even if they were trying to be an original one. They still don't comply in all aspects of the deal. So I think it's got two strikes against them. One of them, I guess I can, I could live with, if you say that this is gonna be the first official one underneath the four, the rest of them are grandfathered, don't count. But if that's the case, then they need to apply someplace else that fits within that range, and that may be difficult to find. So I can't support this.
Anyone else? Okay, is the applicant here? Come up, be sworn in.
Good evening. My name is Adam Lingar. I'm with Cadence Commercial Real Estate, 7939 Floyd in Overland Park, Kansas. Appreciate the staff's consideration, appreciate your all the time. Appreciate the staff's consideration, appreciate your time. The reason we are asking for this conditional use permit is to allow for the redevelopment. I'm excited to be able to tell you that the business has allowed me, who we are negotiating the lease with, it's all but ready for signature. It is contingent on this relocation. That is Chipotle. This will be their second location within the city. It would be a freestanding building, drive-through. Advanced America has lease term left, so in order to move forward with Chipotle at this time, we would have to relocate Advanced America out of that building. Poncho's is relocating. They came to us this summer and said that they were, frankly, they either wanted to buy the building, or they were going to leave. We were not interested in selling the building at that time, so we immediately started marketing it. Through those efforts, we came up with Chipotle. But with Advanced America's remaining lease term, this is why we're asking for your consideration for the conditional use permit.
Councilmember Fowler?
Yes, Your Honor. So I thought those addresses were kind of close. So basically, you're saying they're moving across the parking lot?
Back into, yes, inline space that's comparable in size. It's our smallest space we have remaining that's comparable.
I got you.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you for your testimony. We go to the public. Anyone who has a right to speak and support of? Support of. Opposition two? Opposition two. Close this public hearing. We would like to introduce bill number 4945.
I'll introduce, Your Honor.
First reading of bill number 4945, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit with alternative development standards for a short-term loan service at 792 Southwest 40 Highway.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Councilmember Fowler?
Yes, Your Honor. I suppose that this one is a unique one. One of the things that was mentioned is that there are other competing businesses fairly close, you know, and I'm sure there's pressure on any group of businesses with the market share that they have, and, you know, maybe sooner or later, somebody, one of the two businesses can't make it, I don't know. But since this is connected to development, redevelopment, I kind of want to lean towards helping them out. But also important to me is where the two council members in this district, what would they say if their consensus is both against it, that I'll also weigh that on my decision.
Anyone else? Councilmember?
Yeah, Your Honor. Thank you. I am concerned with the two distance exceptions that are needing to be met to move this business, and I'm hard-pressed to support it.
Anyone else? Councilmember Fowler?
And as I said, I wasn't going to support it, but, and I appreciate that you're trying to develop the property and do something with that additional property, but to me, this is not the right way to do it. By just moving them off to the side, that still doesn't meet, and it still compromises where we stand as far as our codes and what we're trying to do. And even though it may seem like it doesn't set a precedent, to me, it does set a precedent, and I can't do that.
Anyone else? Okay. Take a vote. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both same sign?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. One?
Your vote. Fail.
Fail, no.
All right. Motion fails with a vote of one to six.
Next, we have another public hearing on Blue Springs Aquatic Santa Resoni.
Move to the seventh?
Yes, there's a motion to continue.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to continue that till February the 7th.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both same sign? Motion carries. That concludes all the public hearings tonight. Next, we'll move on to introduction reading of bill number 4946.
I'll introduce, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of bill number 4946, an ordinance approving the final plat for Derek James Estate, Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Same sign?
Aye.
One no vote? Okay.
Second reading of bill number 4946, an ordinance approving the final plat for Derek James Estates, Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Councilmember Fowler?
Yes, Your Honor. I guess one of the things that surprised me on this is it did say that they were going to put up a poll bar, and this, do we have that kind of classification in a residential zoning area?
It would be for a single-family residence. We do not have any single-family residential design standards, so as long as it meets building code and the minimum square footage, we don't have anything in our code that would not allow that.
Anyone else? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Same sign? Oh, that was the second one already?
Second one already.
We're all moving, aren't we? Roll call then.
Councilmember Cole Pepper?
Aye.
Kayler?
Aye.
Levisee?
Aye.
Fowler?
No.
Erickson?
No.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried with a vote of five to two, given ordinance number 5079.
Next, we have an introduction reading of bill number 4947.
I'll introduce, Your Honor. First reading of bill number 4947, an ordinance approving the final plat for Copper Leaf Shopping Center, replat, Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Same sign?
Second reading of bill number 4947, an ordinance approving the final plat for Copper Leaf Shopping Center, replat, Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Kayler?
Aye.
Levisee?
Aye.
Fowler?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Edmondson?
Aye.
Cole Pepper?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 5080.
Next, we have the introduction reading of bill number 4948.
I'll introduce, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of bill number 4948, an ordinance amending ordinance number 5060, the final plat for Cambridge Park, first plat, Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Councilmember Fowler?
Yes, I suppose that this was just in front of us, and we approved it. Now it sounds like the developer wants to come back and take off some things, so help me understand that. Why, I mean, it's only been a couple months, so.
The reasoning for doing... The reasoning for amending that is, under the requirements, they would have to, based on the length of the dead-end streets, they would have had to put temporary cul-de-sacs in before we could release the final plat for recording and release building permits on that. However, they, as they are actively getting ready to start on the second phase of construction, they didn't want to go through that expense of putting that in, and then immediately having to remove the temporary cul-de-sacs as part of the construction. So it's just removing those three to meet the minimum, maximum length of a dead-end street before they're required to have a temporary cul-de-sac.
So, I guess, will these streets ultimately end in a cul-de-sac, or will they just be extended?
The streets will ultimately be extended, and I'm guessing that they will probably be starting that sometime this year as part of that extension for the second.
So there may be challenging turnaround for folks in the meantime, then? That's the consequence of this, that they don't put in a?
Each one of those lots, it's only one lot deep, so if you're getting ready to turn down there, you should be able to see that that street isn't going anywhere.
Okay. Okay. All right. I understand now. Thanks.
Anyone else? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Same sign?
Second reading of bill number 4948, an ordinance amending ordinance number 5060, the final plat for Cambridge Park, first plat, Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Your Honor, move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?